All right, we will go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the regular board meeting, Monday, July 12th, 2021. We are in the St. Peter Middle School Media Center, and you are joining us from the future, because this is on tape delay, as I understand. But thank you. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. There's a flag over there.
Oh, there it is.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We did not receive any requests to speak to an agenda item from the members present. We'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda items. And if anybody would like to pull out an individual item or ask any questions, please do so.
Chair Leonard, I spoke with Tim, and the books are all in order. The bills are all in order.
Excellent, thank you. Chair Carlsberg would have started on time.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So we have a motion.
I'll second it.
With a motion and a second.
I was hoping I could pull an agenda item off. Is it too late?
I'll rescind my motion.
We can discuss it.
Yeah, we can just discuss it.
Okay, I just, I'd like to pull off aye. The approval. We were in the Minnesota Rural Education Association for a while, or a couple of years, and it's kind of a duplicate group with some of the other associations that we are a part of, as far as lobbying and things like that. And a lot of things are, the agenda is just almost a replica of what MSBA is. And so I guess I'm curious why that's on there and why we're considering joining again.
Yeah, this, I did speak to, I can't remember which, any of a shared programs committee about this prior to this. I had met with Bob, oh shoot, I've lost his last name right now. He is the new executive director of MREA. It used to be Fred Nolan for many years. And we are the one district, kind of of all the surrounding districts, that is not a member. And through, especially this past year with COVID, their lobbyist, Sam, has gotten access for a lot of us to meeting with legislators and really spoke to the smaller districts and our needs in COVID, which were very different from large communities. And I see that as the main difference between MSBA and MREA, because MREA focuses on rural education and smaller communities, where MSBA has to represent all districts. And sometimes the metro area schools, the nine metro areas get a little more of their attention than other districts. The cost of MREA, well, for the first year is half price, so it's $1,200 per year, which gives us access to lobbyists, but it also gives us access to all of the information that they're sharing with other districts. Their lobbyist, Sam, has really positive relationships with both sides of the aisle of the Capitol, if you will, and has gotten access to them. And so I see it as a benefit to have that membership and that access to information into Sam.
Okay. Chair Leonard. Treasure Carlson, I was at the committee meeting, and when you, we got access to a map of who's in and who's out. It's, I don't know if it's in here or not.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. It's pretty.
Tell me how here it is.
That was one of the driving factors, that little yellow dot down in the middle, so to speak, of all of us.
Well, it's great that your committee got a chance to discuss this, and I just, I appreciate the explanation, and I think, much like we did when we decided to join five, six years ago, I think it's worth joining, especially half price, just to see what the benefit is, you know? Because I know, six years ago, we didn't see a strong benefit. But, you know, like you said, things have changed, lobbyists have changed, and so, all right, that was the explanation I needed. So do not rescind your.
Okay.
Motion and second. I got the explanation I needed.
Excellent. Further discussion? I just wanted to acknowledge the retirement of Terilyn Rushing.
Yeah.
Multiple kids had her, and really appreciate all her years in the district, and wish her well in retirement. Without any further discussion, move the motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That moves us on to our action items. The first is superintendent to be identified officials with authority for MDE access.
Sounds very official, doesn't it?
It does.
Yes. For all of the state systems, the budgeting systems, it's called EDIAM, E-D-I-A-M, which I couldn't tell you what it stands for right now. One person has the authority to assign those budget areas to different people in the district. Not just budget areas, but our discipline, information, all of our records that have to do with the state have to have a person identified. And so me becoming the Iowa, as we call it, just means that I have the ability to control who has access to enter our records, including myself. And this is an annual.
This is the resolution.
So is the resolution.
Yep. I move that we recognize Bill Gronseth as the identified official with authority for MDE access as our superintendent.
Second.
You moved the resolution, right?
I moved the resolution. That's what I meant. Did not come out that way.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, this is a resolution. Is there any further discussion? Resolutions are roll calls, so we'll start with Member Hager.
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
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 Aye. Resolution carries unanimously. Move on to agenda item number two, membership in MSBA.
This is another annual item that we consider. Almost every school board in Minnesota is a member of the School Board Association. This gives us access to all of their trainings, their leadership conference, their health with policy, their advice when things happen, their lobbyists, as mentioned before. It's $9,947 per year, and I suggest that we continue.
I move that we enter membership in the MSBA Association.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I didn't look at this, but it seems like it's a fairly standard rate, and that that has not, that doesn't represent a substantial increase or deviation from what it has been for a long time.
No.
Which I appreciate that they're not raising rates 20% or something.
This also includes our board book, the electronic version of our records.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have another membership to discuss. This is membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
Yes, and this one, this one has received a lot more attention since the last time we entered membership. The fee structure has changed pretty significantly on this. It is different. You might remember that partway through last year, all districts that were members received an additional bill that was almost four or five times what we originally thought we were committing to. Their committee did a lot of work on the financing. I know that there are still plans with their board to pursue a different financial structure for the association, but for this year, the membership fee structure is, it's $100, and then the registration fee for activities is 225 per activity, and then the cost per student is $6.35. I know one of the concerns that happened midway through last year was that it didn't appear to have any fairness or equity across district sizes, that it wasn't a per-student fee, it was different dollar amounts per student, per district, depending on the size, and this was their attempt to bring some equity to that. I don't have the final dollar amount, but I believe this comes out to be about double what we had originally put in last year. And to not be members is pretty detrimental to all of our programs and our students, and I know that there were some districts who made the decision not to pay that fee last year, and their students were not able to participate in tournaments, end of the year things.
I have a question on that. From your description, it sounds like we're almost being held hostage, and that's a problem in my thought process. So, why do these, why does this group have so much power over what we do as a school?
They're granted that power by the state.
That's what I was going to say, it's a St. Paul problem.
Yeah.
It's a legislature and.
So can we, we cannot participate in a, sports for our children cannot compete with a sports activity unless we're members of this organization? And this is a mandated organization that the state mandates we're a part of it or we can't compete. Is that right? Am I understanding that correctly?
We can't compete in a conference. I mean, you could do intramural, but you wouldn't be part of the state tournaments or.
Yeah, I mean, there's Shattuck. Shattuck isn't a part of it. They play a national's schedule, so.
And you could still play if teams want to play you, but it would be not part of. We can't play in the conference tournaments, and we can't play in the section tournaments, and we wanted to have.
As my great-grandmother used to say at dinnertime, "You're not required to like it, you're just required to eat it."
But Grandma was providing the food. She wasn't taking money out of my wallet.
That's where the analogy's flawed.
And I know that last year, the financial issues were because kids weren't in school, they weren't, you know, they weren't participating, they weren't making money on the state hockey tournament, the state tournaments, and they still had all of their salaries and their bills to pay, and so it came from somewhere, and it came from.
So then we just hope that, since they're going to play next, this coming year, that the price will go down again?
Well, and.
I doubt it.
Part of the language of their funding is that they collect this, and that if there are funds that are left, it's supposed to go back to the member districts, and in the past, some of it has, but I'm not going to hold my breath on it, is I guess what I'm saying.
So I just have a question, because I see my name is on there, and then I was like, oh, and then I think it's because I'm the MSHSL whatever.
Yep.
But, so this advisory committee, how are these people determined? I mean, how did we determine? Is it just we pick people?
They are.
Not necessarily me, but like, and are there more than just those people on that advisory committee? Because right now it's.
For the district, yes.
Okay.
She ain't here.
Well, I'm just curious, I mean, I like Brian Adlin, but I'm just curious if it should be somebody that wasn't a coach and a teacher on there for a parent instead. No, Brian's not going to like me anymore, but I'm just curious. And maybe it's not a big deal, maybe there's other people on there too, and he's just the only one listed.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
John?
From my history, I think that the names on there aren't as important as the, I think that hopefully we get those meetings going again, and maybe they went last year where, or I suppose not last year, but the previous year, where it's an advisory committee of probably 10 or 12. You were on it one year, right?
I was on it one year.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's the main group that, you know, does AAA voting and stuff like that. I do, you can see my name's on as a voting member, but I defer my vote to the athletic director. The athletic director registers my vote, because I figure he knows more than I do. And I just ask him, and then it just takes a step out of there.
Got it. Okay.
So with that being, with my, this situation, I would think that that's.
Okay.
The case as well. With the committee, it's just, it's just a name.
Got it. I just wanted to make sure we are included more than just those four people.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I mean, it's just, it is a bigger group than that.
Okay.
That must be maybe the minimum that you can have, I have no idea, but.
Sounds good to me.
Because it's usually 12, what do you, normally 12?
I can't remember, but yeah, 10, 12.
10 to 12.
Something like that.
Yeah, so.
And I like Coach Adlin, I just want that on the record, so when he watches us, I'm going to like him.
It's not what she said earlier.
Yeah.
Just kidding.
Well, I'll move the resolution to join the Minnesota State High School League for the 21-22 school year.
Second.
Is it? No, it's a resolution.
Is that another resolution?
Yep, it's a resolution.
There's so many resolutions.
One time.
So we have a resolution and a second. Yeah, any further discussion? I will call the resolution. Member Hager?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Aye. Nay.
Leonard, aye. I respect the nay. I don't think any of us are excited about doubling of fees, and no real explanation this year of why that's continuing. Concerning, I would hope that we would get periodic updates about that situation, and since that is a legislative action, they're done for a while, but.
One of the items that the superintendent association worked on this year was getting a seat at the decision-making table with the high school league, and we were able to get a representative on the committee, so now there'll be an ongoing superintendent voice from our perspective, which is something that has been absent for a while.
It's a unique group, I mean, how it falls within the structure of everything else.
Superintendent Gronseth and I were on, I think there was two, we were on one together for sure, where they were just kind of explaining what's going on during the COVID, and it was underwhelming, their explanation. It seemed like the perfect time to furlough some people, and that wasn't going to happen. They didn't have things for people to do, and yet they, I will, I think the best thing I learned is that his wordsmanship was exemplary, because he talked his way out of so many tough questions. It was, I was, I think everybody left that meeting disappointed, so. So hopefully, the legislature and now having a superintendent on the decision-making board will make a difference going forward.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number four, which is curriculum review. And for the benefit of those watching, we had a fairly robust discussion just a little while ago at our study session, which preceded this, so we don't need to necessarily duplicate that conversation again, but bring it before the board for vote this evening.
I'd just like to thank all of the staff. There's a very thorough program review process in place in the district, and just the depth of knowledge of our programs, our materials, and the recommendations that come around of our process are really appreciated and remarkable.
Does anyone have any further discussion? We looked at physical education, ag education, and.
Career and tech ed.
Career and tech ed. I was searching for the actual type of areas, and not working.
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommended changes in those areas of curriculum.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I think one of the reasons why this is an area of our, we have lots of areas that are flourishing, but you really need champions in each of the areas to, you know, to be focused on, how do we make this better constantly? From raising funds, doing a car rally, I don't know if I remember that two years ago, and I mean, I just think we have, I want to compliment the principals in the hiring process, because we've got some very good people in the right seats that are making those programs go.
Excellent, we have a motion and a second. I will call the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item number five is the next step in a long process, which is moving forward with the referendum resolution tonight. So Superintendent Gronseth?
Yes, this is an item that we've been talking about for several months, while you've been talking about it before I even came to the district, but we have been working with Baker Tilly, and now with Philip Martin of Kennedy and Graven to define the referendum amount. And tonight, we are asking for a resolution to set that amount for an additional $410 per pupil for the operating referendum ballot question. There are several other required notifications, and governance committee, and many steps that take place in the process of a referendum campaign. And so the resolution before you tonight sets that amount at an additional $410 per student, which is just under $60 a year for the average property owner, and also authorizes us to take all of the necessary steps to pursue a referendum in November. So it is a very lengthy resolution that I'm sure Chair Leonard has a wonderful strategy for sharing with, I'm reading you four pages. But along with this is a sample ballot. This isn't the exact language, well, it's the exact language, but it's not exactly how it will look, but this is the exact language that would be represented on a ballot, and all of that is put together by our attorneys, so that we're following all of the statute language when it comes to all of that.
And I think, to be clear, we're, the reason why this is coming up this year is we have a levy that's falling off.
Right.
If you want to speak to that a little bit, just because it's not really 410, or, go ahead, I'll let you speak, sorry.
So currently, we have a referendum that is, has been in place for 10 years. It is set to sunset this year, which means if we do not replace the operating levy, that the district would need to make significant decreases in our budget, and that the dollars that go, that are gathered from this operating referendum go into our general fund and pay for things like the career and tech ed classes, and those opportunities that we're talking about, and for the extra support for our students, for the social-emotional pieces that we've, that we've been able to add. So it's really important that we continue this funding. We also know that our needs are increasing, our costs are increasing, but our revenues are not, are not increasing at the same rate. And so we do need to make an increase in our operating levy ask, and that is why we are increasing it by $410 per pupil, so that we can continue to provide these services and the opportunities for our students. And so as we enter into this process, we'll be having many opportunities to share throughout the community, and meeting with organization groups, and going to driveways and parks, and sharing all of the information about the referendum, why are, why it's so important to the future of our district.
And how much was the current operating levy that's sunsetting?
The current amount is $182.10. There are parts of that that sunsetted previously during the construction process, so it's kind of making up for some lost ground there. And that is the, just the operating referendum piece.
Yes.
So I will read the resolution, not in its entirety, because it is seven pages long.
Come on, Ben.
But I will read what I feel are the most relevant parts. I welcome any additional questions. I encourage the public to get a copy of the full resolution if they care to see it, and that will be reflected in the minutes from this as well. So I'll go ahead and start. A resolution relating to increasing the general education revenue of the school district by approving a new referendum revenue, review, revenue, sorry, authorization, and calling an election thereon. Be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 508, state of Minnesota, as follows. The board hereby determines and declares that it is necessary and expedient for the school district to increase its general education revenue by $410 per adjusted pupil unit. As provided by law, the ballot question must abbreviate the term per adjusted pupil unit as per pupil. The additional revenue will be used to finance school operations, and the property tax portion thereof will require an estimated. and the property tax portion thereof will require an estimated referendum tax rate of approximately 0.07194% of the referendum market value of the school district for taxable payable in 2022, the first year it is to be levied. The proposed referendum revenue authorization would be applicable for 10 years unless otherwise revoked or reduced as provided by law. The question on the approval of this referendum revenue authorization shall be School District Question 1 on the School District ballot at the special education held to approve said authorization. The ballot question specified above shall be submitted to qualified voters of the school district at a special election, which is hereby called and directed to be held on Tuesday, November 2, 2021, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. Pursuant to State Minnesota Statute Section 205A dot 11, the school district polling places are combined polling places, and the precinct served by the polling places and the combined polling places, as previously established and designated by the School Board Resolution adopted November 16, 2020, and for elections held in 2021, is hereby designated for the special election. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause written notice of said special election and to be given to the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part, and to the Commissioner of Education at least 74 days prior to the date of said election. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said special election to be posted at administrative offices of the school district at least 10 days before the date of said special election. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause a sample ballot to be posted at the administrative offices of the school district at least four days before the date of said special election, and to cause two sample ballots to be posted in polling places and combined polling places on election day. The sample ballots shall not be printed on the same color paper as the official ballot. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause notice of said special election to be published in the official newspaper of the school district for two consecutive weeks, with the last publication being at least one week before the date of said election. Notice of election so posted and published shall state each question to be submitted to the voters and set forth in the form of a ballot below, and shall include information concerning each established precinct, polling place, and combined polling place. The clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause the rules and instructions for the use of optical scan voting system to be posted in the polling places and combined polling places on election day. The clerk is authorized and directed to acquire and distribute such election materials as may be necessary for the proper conduct of this special election. The clerk is further authorized and directed to cause ballots to be prepared and used at said election, and follow all applicable laws. I think the gist of this is that we are going out for a referendum, and that special election date is the normal election date that elections will be held. And your polling places are the same as outlined earlier. And I've lived in St. Peter's since 2013, and I think the same, or 2004, sorry, and it's the same places that I've always voted. So it should be fairly straightforward.
Yeah, and we will be sharing much more information. This is really an important step in this process of setting the dollar amount for the referendum ask so that we can begin to produce a lot of information and share that information with people throughout the community.
Absolutely. Any questions? Anyone want to move the resolution?
I make a motion to approve the resolution. As read, as read by Chair Leonard.
I can do it again. We have a motion and a second. This is a referendum.
I have a discussion question.
Excellent.
Because there's also, we'll also be electing school board members that day as well. Does that need to be done or approved? Or is that just something that, does that have to come before us, before? Or is the window big enough that we could do it at the next meeting?
We did that in the June meeting?
Oh, we did? Oh.
I do remember doing that.
Sorry.
It's hard. There's a lot going on.
It's okay. Superintendent Gronseth, they put you on the spot since we're talking about, do you remember the filing dates?
July 27 through, yeah, through...
27, 23 through August.
10-ish?
10-ish, yeah.
Yeah, so if you are interested in filing, that would be the time to do so. And if you're looking for the specific date, I highly encourage you to reach out to the district office ahead of time so you don't, you don't miss that, because it's, there's no turning in late homework when you file for office. So you have to hit those, those dates. And it's a $2 filing fee.
Yeah, we did that in June because this meeting wasn't far enough in advance of the filing date.
Okay.
And we have like notice for the election and like papers and stuff. Isn't there like requirements that, okay?
Yep.
Two weeks.
Any further discussion? I will call the resolution. Vicki?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Leonard? Aye. Resolution carries. We'll move on to the LTFM plan, which is the Long Term Facilities Maintenance Revenue Plan, which we also discussed at length at our study session prior to this meeting. Normally, we don't have those back-to-back. But with timing, it worked out, and with member vacations, we ended up moving this meeting to this date so that we would have a majority of board members here. Well, we would have had a majority anyway. But the most board members we could have at a meeting, because we had some important action items tonight. So I don't want to short shrift that discussion here, but I just wanted to acknowledge that we had a lengthy discussion.
Yes, well, as we said earlier, this is an annual report or an annual resolution of the school board. It is how we plan to use long-term facilities maintenance dollars for the next 10 years. And the closer that time period, the more sure we are of that plan. So within, within next year and the year after, we're pretty clear about those plans and have started developing all of the paperwork that we need to do that. The farther out you get in that 10-year plan, the less sure we are, because things happen. And just like in our, in our homes, when needs come up, we need to address them and sometimes have to adjust, adjust that 10-year plan. And so Mr. Regner is here to answer any questions that you might have and to give us some highlights of the next 10 years.
We did go over to length earlier tonight, but I'll kind of get the highlights in, and then Mark can help me with some of the expenses, especially particularly for the buildings and grounds parts of it. You should have a new packet, about six pages. The first couple are the expense parts of it, and Pages 3, 4, and 5 are the revenue component of it. I'll maybe just start with Pages 3, 4, and 5. Again, that's the revenue component of the LTFM. And we get approximately $380 per student, or depending upon our enrollment, $900,000, a little over $900,000 annually, which is split between levy and aid. We get, due to our mix of enrollment and property, we get a little bit over half of that in aid, which is, which is really good. So we don't have to have as high a property taxes. And then the expense side, this program started about five or six years ago, at which time we needed to fix one of the roofs. So they allow you, because you have big projects like that, they allow you some years to go negative. So we went negative originally, we were probably 800, 900, I don't remember what it was, but there for a couple of years, we were about $900,000 negative. We've kind of worked that down, because we've spent less in expenses than in revenue over the last couple of years. This last year, due to COVID and a couple of other projects not happening, we're going to drop the negative down to probably $200,000 to $300,000. In the next couple of years, and I'll let Mark talk about this in a little bit, we've got a couple of other projects that are coming up. So the balance will be probably $400,000 or $500,000 negative. Before, the plan is to start working that back down again. And then also, probably Years 9 and 10, it's a 10-year plan, and you know, things change a lot, and we, you know, it's pretty much a dynamic thing. And we're pretty sure, you know, Years 3, 4 are pretty close. But 9, 10, we're probably going to need a new roof on one of the buildings, which is probably going to be another $900,000. So the goal is kind of in Years 4, 5, and 6 there, to build up a little bit so we don't go so far negative in those years. It covers a lot of different programs. It was a great program when the state initiated it a half a dozen years ago, because we really didn't have a mechanism to small, I think the top 25 schools in the state got funding on this automatically. The rest of the schools did not, and this really fills a hole in some of our maintenance needs for, for the different, four buildings or five buildings that we have. So it's been a good program. The, like I said, the revenues are $900,000, and on the outlines, you know, the spending goes up and down. And Mark, maybe if you want to just allude to a couple of the newer projects, they're not really newer projects, but they're added to the list this year, in Years 2 through 4, and then 9 and 10.
Sure. So we had a four-year plan, two years ago we set up, well, a year and a half ago, prior to COVID. And some of those projects, like Phases 2, 3, and 4, replacing the ceilings and lights at the middle school, weren't ever placed on a budget. So now those were added into the LTFM budget. So that's part of the increase over the next three fiscal years. Also, a parking lot for the early childhood and district office is in need of replacement, and that was not in a, in a budget item somewhere, and it fits into LTFM. So that's the reason for the big increases in fiscal year '22, not as much of an increase in the following fiscal years. The third item that added to LTFM, which brought our dollar value up, is with the capital projects levy, we put a lot of plumbing expenses in the capital projects levy every year. We just knew there were, especially in this building, North Elementary has a fair amount of plumbing repairs. It's just inevitable. But we moved those out of capital projects, because that's going away, and added them to LTFM. So that's really what changed the numbers that you saw last year, and explains the increases in the next couple of fiscal years.
And we did, like I said, this year, when there's a couple of projects put off, we were probably a couple hundred thousand dollars under where we thought would be our, less negative, I guess would be the word, than before. Part of that was we got a little extra funding because of, if the building's got to be over 35 years to get the maximum, and there was a little bit of a mix-up, I think on the state side, how much we were getting. So we kind of caught up on that. It was after the new school was built, it was kind of a quirk in the system. When we built the new school, before the new school was built, our average age of the buildings were over 35 years. Then we built, so we got the maximum funding. And then we built the new school, and because that was a lot of square footage, it put us down to like 32, 33 years. So we got less money, but had one more building. So, but now we've caught, I mean, we've aged over 35. So, but that was kind of a little bit of a quirk in the law, and how it worked for us.
I had a question I didn't ask the study session, but I think we've had board discussions about this in the past. But a lot of districts, you know, build schools at different times. And if you look at our middle school, and South and North were built at different times. But we had a pretty catastrophic tornado, which set us kind of at, every, every building at zero. And we did receive new roofs and things as part of the insurance settlements from that. But it also has set our district on a pattern of every roof comes due at the same time. Is that accurate to say? And is that part of the reason that sometimes we're, we're spending ahead just because all of our needs happen at once because of that?
Well, actually, a couple of our roofs were able to be repaired. The former high school, now the middle school, needed that roof repaired. But North was a partial, South, so we are on different schedules.
Okay, good.
Those are spread out pretty well. So it's, it's more the new high school, which will not be new in about 15 years, which has all LED lights in it, which will all just quit working the same day.
In the summer.
Yeah. So that's what's going to come up in fiscal year '30, '31. How, when do we just start replacing out what's working? But if we wait till they're all out, then we're going to have a big lump sum, because the parking lots will come due, the light will come due, those roofs will wear out too. The roofs we put in at the high school meant to be 30-year. And we do, Tom Appel started this before me, maybe someone before him, but we have a running list. So when we put a new roof on, we just automatically drop it back down to the bottom 20 years later. And that, that's really what helps us nail down the big items that are going to be coming up with our LTFM.
Thank you. Any other questions? Again, thank you, and thanks for the discussion during the study session as well. This is a resolution as well.
I make a motion, we approve the resolution for the LTFM.
I'll second it.
And I should read this resolution as well? Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District Number 508, State of Minnesota, approves the attached fiscal year '23 Long Term Facilities Maintenance 10-Year Plan. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly noted, and it gives the, who made the motion and seconded, and... All right, I will call the resolution. Vicki?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Ben? Aye. Resolution carries. Thank you. Move on to action item number seven, which is the second and final reading of revisions to the policy manual. We have our entire policy committee here tonight, as well as our superintendent.
We do. We have one policy, Policy 603 before you tonight, Curriculum Development. And there was one further change made to this as it came to you. As we are working on the policies that are going to be coming for our first reading, you'll see that paragraphs D and E were repeated in several policies. And we just like the clarity of having it in one policy rather than in four. And so that was the change that was brought to you for a second reading.
Excellent. Any initial discussion, questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I can make a motion to approve Policy 603 as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. And we'll move on to the changes to the mobile device handbook.
And this is an item from Mr. Overbow, a yearly review of how we handle our devices and whether they go home or not. And so I'll let you share more information about that.
Sure, thank you. Every, every year, we go back and review the expectations that we have for suits when using their devices and when handing them out, and what parents can expect, and then how to handle damages, lost ones, and as well as who gets them and what they do with them. We went through it extensively last year and modified it when it became clear that it was going to be more of a one-to-one environment with take-home privileges. And so we made very few changes this year. Everything that applies to that continues to apply this year. Prior to last year, we had sent one-to-one devices home with 9th through 12th graders. And the other ones were shared carts in early childhood through 8th grade. And then this past year, we've been able to provide every student early childhood through 12th grade with a device and of their own. And we'll continue to do that this year. The difference may be that some of our younger grades will still have the devices issued to each student, but keep them at school. And so the same, largely the same policies take place. There's a little bit of a difference in how we handle damages if this, if the devices are kept at school versus taken home or the nature of the damages. But that was, that's the, the major change. Just a very small tweak in the language on whether the devices are sent home or whether devices are kept at school. And we had a very good year this last year. We did see a little rise in damage. You know, we'll usually see 2% to 3% of our devices have some sort of a damage that we need to collect it and then either reissue a device or repair it. This year was a little over 5%, but it certainly was not. It wasn't bad by any means. And so we were able to handle that. And most of the repairs we handle in-house and support all of our, all of our students. But I think we found that in, even in some other instances where it seemed more damage, once a student has the device that's their own, they take better care of it. And the teachers use them every day. And the students enjoy using them. And so having a device that isn't worked or is broken, it's, it's no fun. So they, they have that incentive as well to, to take care of their devices. So our families do a very good job of, of taking care of them. And so that's, and then we, we do this handbook a little bit early than the regular student ones, just so we can start pushing the information out as families get ready for the fall.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So what, do we have iPads like at the elementary level? We have Chromebooks, I know, for at least a couple of grades here. Or is it just Chromebooks all through middle school? And does once a kid have a Chromebook then? Are they like when they get to ninth grade? Are they going to go back to an iPad? Or are they sticking with the Chromebook? Or how's that work?
Yep, so our early childhood through fourth grade students all have iPads. Fifth grade students through eighth grade, so middle school have Chromebooks. And then ninth grade through 12th grade have iPads. And so a student will get their own device in second grade and keep it throughout their career at North Elementary. They'll get a new device in fifth grade and keep it through their career at the middle school. And then a new device in ninth grade and keep it through their career at the high school. And then our South devices are the best of the ones that we recollect from North typically. Because they still have, since that's only three years at North, we have a fourth year of life to use them itself. So, and then between those devices, the early childhood and, and through first grade, never have a, or the plan is never to have a device that's more than four years old.
So then, of course, my question is going to be next is, what's the reasoning for that?
It's largely driven by the needs of the school. The students that are in early childhood through fourth grade do a lot more, the tools that they use the iPads for a lot, maybe more app-based, that they're not creating as much content as the older students. And so, and so the iPad is a good fit for that. And now all of the iPad second grade through 12th grade have keyboards on them as well. So if they do need to do more laptop-ish tasks with them, they do have that keyboard available to them. And then at the middle school, since we are largely a Google-based school, the Chromebooks are a good fit for students to become familiar, familiar with using the Google suite of tools. They're closely, they're closely supported as well. And we're seeing a lot more adoption of Chromebooks and Google tools in the workplace. So having a device that, that gets our students very familiar with how to use those tools is important at the middle school. And it seems to be a good fit for what the teachers do for them at the middle school. And then at high school, we see a much richer environment of content creation that we have. Classes where they're creating videos, where they're creating different podcasts, where they're, they're, they're creating the things that we think of, the, the reports and the research papers and things like that. But they're also creating all of this other digital content that the iPad as a device is a better fit for videos editing and, and producing those as well. And so we did, two years ago, go through the buildings and with the teachers and, and kind of revisit the devices that we had at each building and, and found that what we had was a, was a good fit for what they want to do. And so I think with their intense usage this last year, coming up at the end of this year, next year, we'll probably do another review every three to four years. We just want to go back and check to make sure what we're issuing is a good match for what teachers want to do.
It's just, it's interesting, you know, that it flops around, but.
I have a question. So since every student has their own computer or whatever, is there any, is there any more computer labs? I mean, do the kids still have, use the computers at the school?
We do have a handful. We, in the shift to issuing students their own devices, we have reduced those. There are fewer of those. But there is still, there is still a need, especially, we have one here at the middle school. And then we have two at the high school. One is a PC lab for business that the, the business classes focus on some software tools that just better fit on a PC. And then we have a project, we also have a project Lead the Way Lab here at the middle school and a project Lead the Way Lab at the high school that has higher performing PCs for CAD and sort of engineering, 3D design sort of work as well. And so we have those two labs. We have some IMAX at the high school in two different spaces for content creation for the video classes and for the art classes as well. And then if, if we do have devices that students have used, but they still seem to be functioning, we do also issue carts full of, of devices back if they're still good to teachers as well. I know, not this year, but the year before, the music program here at the middle school wanted a cart of iPads. We have those available, so we set them up for them to use as well. And so, yep, so it's, it's changing. We try to, to meet the needs and aren't stuck in one.
Well, I'm wondering how that is going to affect the policy? Because we're going to have, we, I know we're coming up to the policy for the, you know, how they're going to use the computers and stuff. Now that they all have their individual ones, it's going to be, we can, after we read that, just see how it all complies, so.
Well, to kind of piggyback a little bit on why are keyboards standard with the iPads that they receive? I mean, because it seems like there's a lot more typing. And while kids can figure it out on an iPad, it's much easier having a keyboard. I would think if I have to write a paper, than it would be to be typing actually on the device that I'm reading what I'm typing.
Yep, the, all of the iPads at the high school and all of the iPads at North have an integrated keyboard. So a separate, you know, sort of almost, not quite like this, but a much better.
But something like that?
Yep. And so all of our high school students and the students in North have that.
All right.
Do the, the middle school, does that have that as well?
Yep, the Chromebooks are more like a laptop, right? And so they have, they have the keyboard with them. Yep.
Excellent discussion. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2020, 2021 Mobile Device Handbook. Should that say 2021?
The changes too? Yeah.
See how sharp I am still? That's the motion I'm going to make then.
Excellent. We have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Calling the motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That is the end of our action items for the evening. And we will move on to our one and only information item, which is the first reading of policies.
There are three policies coming to you, all based on the same, same topic or stream of topics. Policy 601 is school district curriculum and instructional goals. Much of what you see is based on World's Best Workforce Legislation. And the policies are designed to keep us on track, to be aligned with, with World's Best Workforce. 604 is instructional curriculum regarding the district's curriculum, how it's going to be chosen and what it should provide for students. And then policy 618, assessment of student achievement, which is also aligned with World's Best Workforce and keeping us in alignment with state and national requirements regarding assessment. In addition to the policy committee meeting, I had a meeting with principals to have an initial discussion regarding these three policies as well. And they too will be reviewing them to make sure that these are in alignment with what we are doing as a district and what we would like to see. So they will be helping us to review those and will get us some feedback before the next meeting of the policy committee and therefore the next board meeting as well.
I have a question about, is the policy, when we talk about reading level by grade three and there'll be an intervention? Just because I've been hearing a little chitter chatter out on the streets about reading in our kids. So like, if a kid isn't reading, to whatever our standard, I'm guessing how we assess them, there is intervention that's happening by grade three?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'd like to talk about that.
We, you know, as part of our assessment suite as a district, you know, we do use, and you hear about MCAs, that's, those are the scores that are in the newspaper and that the state uses. We also use FastBridge data, which is more local. It's several times a year. And it's ongoing basis of feedback on where students are. And it's really that kind of data that our teachers are using on an ongoing basis to, to see where students are and to see when they need intervention. And that information is shared with parents as well, letting them know where their student is within skills and reading and math. And then there's also, you know, conferences and report cards and all of that too. But it is an important piece of partnering with our families to make sure that our students are getting the skills that they need. There is special legislation around reading levels. World's Best Workforce tells us, reading well by grade three is the language that is used. Every school district is required to have a read well by grade three plan, which starts in preschool and goes all the way through third grade. That really lays out how we, how we teach reading and how we react when students are falling behind grade level. And so that's probably, could be a study session all on its own.
No, I just wanted you to talk a little bit about reading.
Yeah.
So thank you.
So there were, that's something I could talk a lot about.
And I think it's funny to note that we sort of mandated policies. And we didn't have any of these post-three policies. So we're just kind of.
So I was, I think that answers my question.
Most of this stuff is just language things? Not really a change in our actual policy?
Well, we did have, again, that used last three policies. So these are just added, they're adding these on to, because they're mandated. We have to have them in our policy, you know?
My opinion, they were a good policy. I still think it was just mixed. Just kind of confusing, you know? I, I thought a lot of those were just. So I don't think they were wrong, right?
Can we have a couple more that we'll read for the structure curriculum that we're going to do right after, I think? Because we want to be familiar with everything that we're reading right now. So we're not really. So some of them are mandated and they're not really important, but we might find some of the stuff that we already have.
Yeah, thank you. If there are questions or comments on those policies, please get those to the policy committee or Superintendent Gronsa. Move on to reports. We have many principals here tonight.
Only half are coming.
I will get started reading those.
I think this is the only one that's working.
Oh, that's the only one that works?
This is the only live one right now. Two on the N's are working.
Okay, we'll pass that one around. Chairs are sticky. Great song. These look really nice. They look official. I'll just talk into this one. Finally, a DJ.
Greetings from early childhood, South and North, where it seems like all the programs are going on at North right now. We have quite the hop in the building, usually at the elementary levels. It's pretty quiet in the summer. But for the last handful of summers, when we were planning around pandemics, we've had South, students have been coming over to North for extended school year and targeted services. So at any given time right now, there's about 300 students at North, which is really unlike how it usually is. And it's, and it, I think it's great. Our custodial staff hustled. They, they brought over the South custodial staff and got all the rooms cleaned out before even summer school started. So besides the waxing of the floor, like North is almost ready to roll for the fall. But number-wise, we're sitting usually at around about 200 students in kindergarten through fourth grade, targeted services, which we coined. That's our Summer Stars Academy program. And that's, I believe it's almost double what we usually have, like right around there, which is great. And then extended school year, our students that have IEPs. And those students are on that same schedule. So it's about five weeks of time, Monday through Thursday. I believe there are around 30 to 40 students are taking in that kindergarten through fourth grade. Early childhood also has summer school programming going. That's three weeks and they have their last week next week. And so that's exciting. A lot of students doing some summer learning. And I've talked to some of my colleagues, some of the principals around the area, who are also doing summer programming. And they had a lot of challenge in finding staffing because they started, I mean, almost like directly right after the school year. And we took a little break and started, you know, right at the end of June. And I mean, at, just at the kindergarten through fourth grade level, including specialized, we have 14 teachers, like doing it plus another 20, about 20 paraprofessionals. That's, I mean, just hats off to our staff for, I mean, working so hard this last year and then being willing to come in during the summer months to pick up and support all those kids. So that's really phenomenal. Food, food distribution's going on as well. Looks like we're handing out about 700 meals, like five-day packs. About 700 meals each Wednesday. And that comes to about 7,000 to date for the summer meal program, which is pretty awesome. That includes like Saints OT, which is going, overtime, which is going at North as well. And then, what am I missing? Oh, obviously the summer program. So another cool thing, North is like, it's almost like an all-day-long, we're able to get the rec department to come a few days a week to do activities in the afternoon. So kids show up for morning summer school, eight to noon, and then kind of hang out for the afternoon and do some recreation stuff. Then they've been out on the grass or they've come into the gym on some inclement weather days. So it's happened. It's a good time. Also, Sarah reminds me that starting, a question that's popping on some parents' minds, when will we find out our child's homeroom teacher? That'll be coming up. I believe Vazelki is planning about this first week of August as well. We'll get the mailings out and get that all taken care of. Hopefully with that general mailing that happens in August, everybody will know then, at least at the kindergarten through fourth grade level. What about middle school? How about that transition? You want this one?
That's cooler. All right, and at the middle school, also running a very similar schedule to what North and South are for our targeted services. We also have extended school year and ELL programs going on. Our numbers aren't that high, but we're very excited about our numbers. We have about 60 kids in attendance every day, which is double what we typically have. So super excited. We also do. We also do eight to noon, which is math and reading support. And then from 12:30 to 1:30, doing something new this year, which you've heard about, we're doing some enrichment activities. And about 75% of the kids actually hang out and stick around for that. So about 45 kids are staying. And they do hour of enrichment and it's a rotation. So what we have to date offered, we've had some sewing classes, some landscaping classes, some nature art, where Eva Hendrickson, from the high school art teacher, took kids to Mill Pond and they just found stuff and made art out of it. We've done some fishing at the Mill Pond and stained glass making. And this week, a new addition this week, Missy Terpstra, every kid's going to do a tie-dye shirt. So I'm hoping to get involved in that too. And then the last update, our Jump Start program, which we do every single year. We've set some dates for that. We're hoping to do that August 17th and 18th. And one of the things, like the silver lining from the pandemic, you know, you have to try new things. One of the things that will stick around, because of the pandemic, we did more sessions, smaller groups last year. The teachers who run that program liked that. And they felt like they got to know the kids better and it was a better experience for kids. So we'll be offering six total sessions over those two days of Jump Start. And those letters, I'm hoping to get out to families as soon as tomorrow, those incoming fifth graders for that orientation.
Okay, so the high school did start summer school right away. So we are actually done with summer school at the high school. In the past, we've done one session. This year we did two sessions, and they were a bit shorter. So we had two two-week sessions. We have 140 students enrolled and we had 130 credits completed. And so each course with half credit, so that's really like 260 course completions, which is really high. And that included, we have 16 incoming ninth graders. We did kind of a new program this year where we picked some students that needed some reading intervention. And we had three teachers working with those 16 students to get their oral communication half credit, geography half credit, and do some really direct reading instruction. So that was really successful. The students had lunch and breakfast provided. We partnered with Minnesota River Valley Transit to help get kids to the high school. And we also lucked out, we had eight staff from the high school volunteer. And they were there almost full days, teaching all of the classes. We had a couple of paras. So it was a really successful program thanks to a lot of people. And again, just really pleased with the completion rate. Getting students into summer school and then getting them all the way through to completion is really difficult. It's usually about a 60% completion rate. We were at about 85% this year, so it was really, really high. Really pleased overall. Extended school year, special ed, IEP programming is still happening now. It'll happen through the high schools. They will wrap that up by the end of July.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent Gronsa?
Yes, as the principals mentioned, our schools are very busy. If you're by our fields or in our gyms or the classrooms, there seem to be kids all over the place and people using our facilities as well for different camps and things. And we're really excited to be just having all of that busyness around us. At the same time, I want to thank our maintenance and facilities staff for working around all of this activity and still getting us ready for school in the fall. And just their flexibility with getting things changed back to pre-COVID arrangements and on top of all of the usual summer things that are on their to-do list. Speaking of returning to school and things returning to somewhat normal, CDC recently released some guidance for K-12 programs with recommendations. We understand that the Department of Education and the Department of Health are in the process of using the CDC guidance to come up with their own guidance. We're not really clear what that's going to be at this point. To this point, they've said that things are recommendations, but we will continue to monitor their guidance and make sure that we share that as soon as we know more. Right now, they're saying that it is recommended that people who are not vaccinated, which is everyone under 12, wear a mask. But that is a recommendation and not a requirement at this point. I would say that we will likely have more discussion about that in the future when MDH and MDE finalize their guidance for us. That's about all I have tonight.
Thank you.
Literally about all I have tonight.
Board members will go around the table. So Dr. Soderlin?
I just want to, well, this isn't a formal shirt or jacket to tie a fair school board meeting. Study sessions are a little more laid back. And I have, up in my truck, a colored St. Peter School Board shirt that I meant to put on. I had to go recruiting real quick, so I apologize for being... It's hard to underdress for this, but I definitely did tonight. And I apologize to the rest of the board. I will dress just a touch more, not, I won't dress formally, but I'll dress better next time, so.
Tim appreciates that.
I would like to mention that I came straight from work.
I didn't know there was a dress code.
I also like that you saved your apology for when all the mics went out. So no one watching this is going to hear it.